I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, Frasier?
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Councilwoman Terry?
Here.
Councilwoman Klein?
Here.
Councilwoman Coon?
Here.
Council clerk here. Council attorney is there.
Here.
Out of the approval, or out of number one, additional deletions, deletion changes, approval agenda.
There's been a request to strike number six and number seven from the agenda. And I have to add number 12. A request for donations from, straight from the heart.
And number two would be a like?
Yes.
Number two would be a like, yes.
Hopefully not two.
You still have any one?
Motion to approve the changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
With all favor, or all favor approve an agenda with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Out of number two, approval minutes of May 2024, town council meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 2024, town council meeting.
All favor approve the minutes of May 2024, town council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, out of number three, public participation. At this time, we'll wait, open up for public participation. We will, please come to the podium if you want to speak.
Stu.
Yes.
Thank you very much, your honor. It's nice to be here tonight. I was accused of county meeting recently. I'm spending a long way of time in Fort White, but I haven't been here in quite some time. And it's nice to see you all. Trying to do my best to. I've also accused of having dementia. I'm working on that right there. I can't be here tonight because there's a very important issues that are facing the county. Out of number eight has a revision agreement. I'm not exactly sure what that is. And there are certain water issues. And I would just like to say that I don't live in the town, but my zip code is Fort White. And everybody from the south end of the county, three rivers, they kind of relate to Fort White. It's a big following. Everybody follows what goes on in Fort White. And I know that the county now is looking into a bunch of disagreement, a bunch of different agreements. And my only advice to the city council, to the town council, that you need to think about it some more. Special good water. Once this town council and the town gives up its rights to its water, we're going to lose control of the growth of Fort White, and really the south end of Columbia County, which includes three rivers. Water is power. And I spoke to friends of mine, and I told them, I have no problem being exited to the town of Fort White. I'm down by 138. Paying a few bucks extra in taxes for an increased level of services, like they do in Lake City. And I really think you need to think about spreading out a little bit. You're getting more than just 500 registered voters and 300 utility customers. The new county utility, which if anybody hadn't seen that meeting, I was there, was sort of a march show. They approved the new interlocal agreement. There was clearly no planning. They didn't even know when they came to the meeting, who was going to write the checks. They had no business plan. They really didn't have much of anything except an interlocal agreement, which was taken from Swan Valley Transit. And they should use the same form. Columbia County is not the transit authority, and the success of the transit authority speaks for itself. Today, the DDC man, Assistant County Manager Kevin Kirby said, I actually understood this part because the county doesn't have good microphones there. He said, "The county has to stop doing what they've done in the past. We built it first and figure it out later." There were 500 acres of swamp land in the north end of the county, and they're trying to figure out what to do with it. They want to run a pipe down 18, which probably should have been better run down 447. And now they're trying to figure out what to do with it. And then my final thing is the backhoe and the dump truck. I've read the emails that went back and forth. But I will tell you this, folks, and that's everybody, I was in those meetings. I sat down there and I listened to these people speak. I listened to the people on the county commission speak. I listened to people from the town speak. I listened to the county attorney speak. At that time, I listened to the town attorney, Fred Colmore, who happened to be there. And there was never any question in my mind that residents of Fort White, the town of Fort White was going to get a dump truck and a backhoe. Period, full stop. I've read these emails, and they're now holding the town up for ransom. Nothing new in Columbia County. But I will tell you, from my own personal observation, from listening, the city attorney knew, the town council attorney knew, the county attorney knew, and everybody knew after everything was said and done. The town was getting a backhoe and a dump truck, which benefits everybody from Columbia County, which the residents in the town of Fort White take a full tilt Columbia County taxes. It represents everybody, it helps everybody in the town, and it helps visitors, helping to keep the streets safe and doing whatever you did with that stuff. So I can only say that sometimes dealing with the county is like dealing with a bunch of mobsters. Some of you may feel that way. I know I do. And I would hopefully, hope, that before you guys do anything rash, that's almost impossible to back that up, you give serious thought to exactly how it is you want to connect up to Columbia County. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Anything else I have to discuss? All right, this time we'll close by participation. We'll move to out of number four, new business. That'd be Wayne. Wayne. Paul Keat. All right, Paul Keat. I got it. Wayne Keat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman, lady. Wayne O'Keed, and we came to see you last April, I believe, or spring, concerning our venture of doing our science fair projects, going to the state science fair. So we're here tonight to give you a little information on that. And before I turn it over to these young men, certainly we'd like you to know how appreciative we are of your support. Okay? Again, things have gotten really expensive for places, new things, and it's just hard to do meal sales, cookies, whatever you have, car washes, to make the money that's needed. So your support made that very possible. And I want you to know, I've had a chance the last month of May and 51st of June to meet and talk with science teachers and people from around the United States. And nothing was more pleasurable for me than to sit there and tell them how we do it back where I'm from. Okay? We're not different. We're not different hearing those people speak. You know, when we were at the international, got to talk with people from Saudi Arabia and Malaysia. And you would think, oh, man, they, you know, they got it going. And it's not. And we're not much, we're not, I would say we're not different. And they're very appreciative of us. But it is a pleasure to sit down and they go, well, you know, we had to do this and this. And I said, well, here's how we do it back where I'm from. And the support of the community, that was a very strong thing. And that made me feel so good to be able to tell those people. Just that. So again, thank you for your generosity. And I'm going to turn it over to these two, okay? It's Joseph and Gavin, okay?
Hello. My name is Joseph Danning, and my project was called Plant Growth and Light Lightning. And me and my partner, who is sadly not here today, became a workplace at the state science fair. And I would like to just say thank you, or just a generous donation of $1,000, because without that, we probably wouldn't be here, you know, going to Lightland and doing all of this. Because this is my first time ever being at the state science fair. And just the opportunity to be here is such a wonderful thing. And I want to say thank you for that, so.
So you were fourth out of how many?
Fourth out of, so there's different categories. So for my category, I think there were 36 in the 30 range. But
There were 786 participants. I said 786. So now, with Gavin right here.
Hello, my name is Alex Soller. And my project, with my partner who also is out there, is on the stages of light on bats. And we worked at the state science fair, of course, and it was also all false time in science field general, right? We never worked county, regional, state, and so we didn't know what to expect. So we made six out of 52 people there. We, we wouldn't have been able to even make it there without your support. And I can speak for us. And we appreciate it. We would like to visit you.
Oh, wow.
From random, is it?
No, it isn't.
Wow, that's awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, take a picture.
Yeah, come here. Let's take a picture.
Very good.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Great job. But I noticed some of these guys, at least, did you? I think the one scout, he ended up winning. Didn't he end up winning his bid? On those states on sports.
He did go to, okay, Seiler wasn't here. He went to the national. And Jack would have been here, but they went to the school board.
I got you.
They didn't read the memo.
So how did he do?
Jack was
No, the other one.
Seiler. Seiler?
Yeah.
He didn't play his game. But
But you told me something on the phone about him.
Well, when you look at going to the international science fair, he was one of the top 70 chemistry projects in the world, okay? In the world. And like I said, we met a lot of people, Saudi Arabians, and he was invited to compete in the chemistry, the world of chemistry Olympiad in Saudi Arabia. So it done quite well.
Thank you so much, thank you, these young men, so.
It's a pleasure. It's a pleasure. But again, nothing's greater than go pray. To pray going, how? Okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
All righty. We'll move number two. Is two ready? Number three, we have public hearing, first reading order is 2024-02, creating a local immunity.
Well, we need to kind of look back to that one because that comes after the presentation, Joe, number two.
Okay. Number four. Go back to number two. Our public hearing, second reading order is 2024-04, annexation contraction for lease of land LLC in Holland, Jackson.
And ordinance of the town of Fort White, sort of relating to contraction of certain lands, is here in the scrap, which were voluntarily annexed into the town limits by ordinance 2020-211, and as petitioned for by the property owners pursuant to Florida statute 171.051, making findings, providing for land use zoning and land development regulations and enforcement of same, providing directions to the clerk of the town council, providing a several ability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an immediately effective age.
Now, this one here, we discussed, kind of knew there was some expenses attached to this one.
Yes, they didn't pay.
We have anybody paying?
Yes.
Everybody didn't pay on this?
Yes.
We already did the first reading, so.
Yeah, the 20th.
So if you're not going to agree with it, a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-04.
Ms. Lady?
So all favor approve the ordinance 2024-04, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Number five, request approval of Dees Park as an off-campus evacuation site for Fort White High School.
Yeah, every year they come and they ask to have Dees Park as an off-campus evacuation site and parent guarding and pick-up location. And they're making that request again for the 24-25 school year, and we do have their proof of insurance on file.
How does it fix an asset?
I'm making a motion to approve the Dees Park as an off-campus evacuation for Fort White High School, say aye.
With all favor, approving these parks and off-campus, that's what, Fort White High School, say aye.
Aye. Five and six have been, I mean, six and seven have been deleted, so maybe they did eight.
Number eight, reversion agreement for Columbia County for equipment. Mr. Ramsey, do you want to, sure, please?
This is the dump truck and backhoe, the long-going saga of the dump truck and backhoe. I believe they've been delivered to, to us. They're here on site, but they don't have, the dump truck doesn't have a tag. And we've not been delivered titles or anything to them. Because at the last county commission meeting, if you could listen, it was on YouTube. Interesting listen. You could hear the discussion about this equipment, where it was decided at that meeting that if they were going to give it to us, then they wanted to, for us to have a reversion agreement that was signed, that said if we withdrew from the interlocal agreement for water with the county, then this equipment would revert back to the county. Now, I would say, you know, since I've been here and working for you guys, that's never been discussed at all with us. It's never been part of the discussion. There is a, we have a letter, or self, I'll correct you. We have a letter from David Kraus. They did receive, there's no date on the letter, but it was received June 21st, 2023, that says, "As part of the agreement of the town of Fort White, Columbia County's purchasing office ordered a Capella 420 Maco and a Mac 2024 MD6 dump truck in April off the Florida sheriff's contract, and we're currently waiting on it there. This equipment will be owned and maintained by the town for town use, but may also be used on the water treatment facilities and distribution lines if needed." So words are important. This equipment will be owned and maintained by the town for town use, period. But may also, but may also be used on the water treatment facilities and distribution lines as needed. Columbia County appreciates working with the town on improving the water quality for the residents of the community. If I can answer any questions, please not hesitate to call me, sincerely, David Kraus. So it's clear that back in 2023, they were giving this equipment to us, period, and that using it for water treatment facility and distribution was considered ancillary, secondary to, hey, we're giving you this equipment, but you could also use it for the water. Now it seems that that is the only thing that matters, is that it's part of this interlocal agreement. Interlocal agreements, I referenced in this letter. Nor is reversion referenced. And now it appears that it seems to be the only thing that matters. And so, all that said, they have included a rework of an agreement that they want the town to sign that says, yes, we can have it, we're responsible for getting the tag on it, insurance and all those kind of things, because you're going to own. But it has paragraph five, and all the other languages, just standard stuff. You know, and of course, it's in your package, you read it, it's all a record, anyone can get it. But paragraph five, it says, "If for any reason, the interlocal agreement between Columbia County and Florida and the town of Fort White for Fort White Water Utility Operations and Management dated August 5, 2021, and effective October 1, 2021, a copy being attached here to, should be terminated, then immediately upon notice termination by either party, the equipment will revert to the county. The town shall cause to be executed such titles or other instruments as may be necessary to fully and finally convey the equipment back to the county. For clarity, this reversion is triggered by any written notice of termination by either party, whether without cause, notwithstanding that the interlocal agreement will not be effectively terminated until the 30th day of September, at least one full year following the date of such notice." So that's a big, long paragraph to say that if either one of us decide that we don't want to be in the interlocal agreement for water with Columbia County, that we immediately give up the equipment, although the interlocal agreement says that we have a one-year termination clause. So if we decided today, which we're not, don't talk to me.
Clarify that, please.
Yeah, this is the original. If we said today, hey, we want to terminate the interlocal agreement, and it doesn't actually terminate for a year, then from the date we voted terminate, so we would continue to operate under that interlocal agreement for an additional year. But this agreement says we have to give back this equipment immediately. So take that for what it is. I'm just conveying information to you. You know, it's my understanding the town needs this equipment, has expected this equipment, and wants this equipment. Columbia County owns this equipment as of whatever time it is today. And so if the town wants this equipment, then we have been told we must sign this agreement. So I had conveyed the information to you. And that is what it is. You can sign the agreement and get this equipment and have it and use it. And it doesn't restrict the use to water, whatever. You could use it for whatever you need in the town of Fort White. So there's no restriction on use. But it is tied to the interlocal agreement to go back to the county if either side decides that they don't want to be in the interlocal agreement. Any questions?
Lindsay, you've been, you've been on this ride the whole time. I mean, you've been, well, I think it got started before you actually came on, I believe.
I think so.
I don't know. It's hard to track all this stuff, yeah, but. I mean, you've been, you've been a part of it since, you remember a lot of it.
Yes.
And you remember sitting in the meetings, and as you just clarified, that of all the promises that this equipment had nothing to do with the water authority.
Absolutely.
Now we're being pushed to a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're being driven, hey, you won't just carry it over here. You must sign this over here.
Correct. They are not going to transfer these two pieces of equipment to us unless we sign this agreement. Being, I mean, there's no other, there's no other position. The county has taken, they discussed it, they agreed to it. Their attorney has drafted the letter and sent us the agreement. So there is no other scenario by which you're going to get that equipment unless you sign this agreement. And again, and I'm trying to, at some point, some of us, either the town or the county, is going to have to start, you know, you can't exist without some manner of discourse, okay? The, the problem, if you want to put air quotes around this, is it's not what we agreed to. It's not what we were promised. It's not what was intended. Now, that said, it doesn't change anything. We get the equipment, we can use it for what we need to in the town of Fort White, with the caveat that if we decide to go somewhere differently with interlocally, then we have to give it back. Or if the county decides that they don't want to continue interlocally, they can give it back. That's the only thing that changes. Other than that, you take that part out, and we're at a status quo of we're getting the equipment. So the council has to make a decision. Do they want to accept those terms?
What was behind the scenes of this? There was some money, right?
$300,000 money, but they're saying they never took the art money, which, I mean.
Here, to answer your question, you was part of that. Was you in that meeting with also?
Yes.
In exchange of the money. So maybe certain, maybe certain commissioners didn't know about all this. Maybe certain individuals down here making promises that they couldn't keep. I don't know. But everybody was sitting in these meetings, heard, give us the art money. We even made the motion on the table. Of $300,000 art money for, because you brought up, because I made it very clear that night, because I was concerned about it breaking statutory laws or whatever. I'm like, that sounds shady. We're going to give somebody money for them to give us equipment. You sure the state's going to be okay with this? So I made it documented on tape. I said, I want, known that the mayor asked this question, okay? Ms. Kirby, no, that was Ms. Kirby.
No, he was not here.
He was not here. Ms. Kirby, I was here, that's right.
I was at the meetings that we had later with Mr. Foreman, Ms. Kirby, Ms. Kraus, and Ms. King, and you and I. But I was not at
So in exchange of the money, the motion on the table that got made that night was, we will give the $300,000 art money, it was to the county. And where if the county uses it, they might use their own money on the water system or either use the $300,000. So that was the motion that went on the table. That's always been my question, okay? Well, then if you don't, if you're not, we're not going to get the equipment, then give us back the $300,000. We made the motion. So if a motion don't hold no more order than that, then why would we make the motions? I've asked that question about
Well, the hair that's being split is the fact that, no, we did not write a check for $300,000 to the county and give it to them.
No, no, no.
What happened was is we spent the money improving the water system after the interlocal agreement was signed, where they were responsible for making all the improvements and repairs, et cetera, et cetera. They were responsible for doing that, and they were getting all the income off of it. So in return, we said, give us this equipment, and we'll spend the $300,000 on the water plant to make the necessary improvements, so they didn't have to spend it out of their pocket.
Guys, how I remember this subliminally, Lindsay, is because me and Connie got in argument about this. Because she was adamant about the $300,000 exchange of equipment, and I thought it was shady. I said, I'm telling you, it's shady. I don't like it, I think it's shady, but then when we cleared it with Coverline, I said, I made myself documented. I said, I wasn't going to, I documented, I didn't like it.
Well, and I think that again, that the June 2023 letter, Mr. Kraus follows that, that line.
That's right.
Their, their letter. I've got emails. I've got, I've got text messages that this stuff's going to work. I've got text messages. It's all, it's going to be delivered to Fort White next month.
Well, in our meetings that we had, because, I mean, the only time that I've ever participated in a meeting with people from Columbia County was that meeting that we had, it was, again, you and I, and Mr. Foreman, and Mr. Kraus, and Mr. Kirby, and Mr. King, not the councilman, King, where we discussed a number of issues. And one of those was this equipment. We were told in that meeting, you're getting the equipment, we'll get that taken care of, you're going to get the equipment. You and I left that meeting and said, oh, wow, we really
That was great. That was a great meeting.
Why don't we do this before? We sit on the sidewalk and have that We sit on the sidewalk and have that conversation of, oh, wow, we really got some things accomplished today.
Yeah, that was way back in January.
That was in January.
That was in December.
And then none of those things have, have come to pass.
No, 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 after we were told that, we'll get this handled, don't worry about it, it's, it's, it's great. It's great, you owe this money, we owe this money. And that's the thing, if you watch that, 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 nobody keeps saying what they owe us. Twenty-five thousand dollars for the, for the, all this other thing they owe us, it's all about what Fort White. We'll get to that part in a minute about the garbage heap, we're not there yet. So, guys, I, I don't, I don't, y'all owe this to the council, so. And I know we all haven't talked a lot, but the reason, it's because me and Lindsay have been involved in this whole thing, in the meetings, going back and forth. I'm sure you have emails, you see text messages where the equipment's on order, it's coming, you should have called me before. This is, and that's why I'm wondering if maybe the, maybe some of the county commissioners did not know all this was going on. I, I don't know, there's got to be an explanation somewhere, unless they just pull them out live.
Can we ask Rocky to join in on?
Sure.
Did he come up to the front though?
I'm not commenting on it.
Okay.
They got letters from the, from the attorney.
There you go. There's your answer, there's your answer, the answers we get all the time. Welcome to the council.
I'm good with the answer, I just wanted to see if that was an option.
What did the attorney send you that we got to sign?
They sent us a contract or an agreement.
It's in your package.
It's in your package. It says.
Some of that talks over my head.
Sure.
It doesn't need to be short, that's, some of it is.
That, that's fine. They sent us an agreement that says, we will give you the backhoe and the dump truck, which are currently sitting out back. But you have to sign an agreement that says if county Fort White or the county decide to pull out of the water interlocal, the county gets that equipment back. That's it.
Now, can I say something? I've been in utility meetings where their utility attorney said that if they form an, a utility authority, that it would be in a violation of law for them to be in a separate interlocal agreement with another municipality. And therefore, they would, we would have to join the utility, utility authority, or the interlocal would have to be done away with. So if we don't join the authority, they're not coming out and saying that, but their attorney said that. So if we don't, then we're forced to not join. We're forced to give it back.
If, if, if that's correct.
So the interlocally, it's another layer besides just the interlocal.
If that's correct, and if, you know, as my understanding, they already have some manner of authority they put together. And they're still in an interlocal with us as of today. So either they're violating the law, or that's not accurate, or they are in the process of, with, I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Because as of today, it's my understanding there is a water authority agreement between Columbia County and Swann County.
Right.
Um, and our interlocal agreement is still active. And I have conveyed to Mr. Gilman, the county attorney, that we don't have any present intention of withdrawing from the interlocal agreement, that we're still in the, in their interlocal agreement. We haven't, we haven't withdrawn from it, we haven't said, you know, that we have any present intention to, so.
With that said, does that mean that we're accepting the water coming in?
I, I'm saying that as of right now, that would, yes, I mean, we would have to continue on with the interlocal agreement. Interlocal agreement would be, is for the, um, county to bring water. And again, forgive me, because a lot of this stuff happened before I came on, on the board. So if I get something wrong technically, forgive me. Is that they're bringing water from a new well in Ellisville, I believe, down here to connect with the town of Fort White. That's part of the interlocal. And so as of now, that continues.
And now I'm the newbie and naive, but don't we want that to continue? Haven't we established that our water is not salvageable, for lack of a better word?
I believe in the, the mayor, other, other, uh, council members can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that the issue is not, there, there's two answers to that. The issue is not so much the water itself, but who is administering the water process, or whatever the term would be, here in the town of Fort White, whether it's the town of Fort White or a continued interlocal with Columbia County, once that connection is made. The other answer to that question is that there has been discussion over time of having a, a secondary, and I know that there's problems with apparently, with some other wells that, that have previously been used by the town of Fort White. But there has been at least discussion about looking for a, a, a separate source of water to then have the town manage its own water. And, and all those things are, are, are on the table, but no discussions have been made. And so in the interim, things continue as, as contemplated under the interlocal, am I correct?
I'm going to really be brave and put this down. As a citizen, the water here has been an issue for over twenty years, the whole time I've been here. And it seems clear that financially, the water, whether you dig a new well or, um, trying to purify what's over there, that cost effective, that's not going to work.
Well, that's a discussion that, again, the council needs to have. And that's a discussion.
I might not even be in whatever you're talking about, I have no clue. The, the dump truck and the backhoe. Even if.
You're not good with the water.
Even with the green, with everything, they could, as fight, just say, on Wednesday, we're going to pick up the dump truck and the backhoe.
You're correct.
Y'all heard that, that's correct.
We could really attach the same, oh, I'm sorry, Stu, I know you've been raising your hand, thank you.
I just have a question, this letter that the county recently sent, that you just read. Isn't that a modification of the interlocal? I mean, that really is modifying the interlocal? You don't like it, she's pulling out an interlocal? And that's not the way we modify the interlocal according to the interlocal. Well, I'm cool. Isn't that right?
Well, you want me to answer that issue, Mike?
Please.
Okay. I don't disagree with you, Stu, but again, you know, we've been, I, I, I spend two hours a week talking about a dump truck and a backhoe. And, and so at this point, I feel, I feel, and I'm, you know, I'm saying on the record or whatever, that, that the county keeps moving the lines about what the, the town's level that we have to, to meet them at, uh, to get the dump truck and backhoe. So do I agree with you? Again, this is twice now, I've agreed with you.
I'm scared.
And, but it, it is what it is. We have, we have the letter from their attorney, we have the, uh, agreement here. The county commissioner doesn't wish to clarify, so that's where we are. You could either take it or leave it, in my opinion.
Let's direct the time to Secretary Seb, that's what we're going to talk about.
I was going to say, that's what I said, see, this is kind of the same conversation we're having, we have to kind of tie this set a little bit. So we want to tie them together and just kind of table them, let's come back to that one, wouldn't it be?
Well, let's see, hold on, I want to make sure, because there's a, a thing or two that.
Absolutely, well, it's all.
Put some arbitrary time.
We're going to get to the garbage part here in a minute, it keeps getting better.
Yeah, let me see, because I want to make sure that there's no arbitrary time limit on this one. No, no, I don't think so, I think it'll just sit in the, in the yard until you guys make it.
Yeah, I see it.
Because they're not going to do it.
Did the man decide the agreement, is that, is there a time limit?
No, there's not, there are.
There should be clarification if that, if, if they're going to cancel out of the agreement because of the Swann County thing.
I, I'm the chairman of the, of utility, and I will go ahead and tell you, there's no, there's no plan to cancel anything for White as far as that utility goes. We have an interlocal agreement for Fort White to maintain and operate a new building for your water plant. That has nothing to do with the utility that we have with Swann County. Now, once we get that utility rolling, the operation and maintenance of this plant will be part of that utility as long as Columbia County is up and sitting in the operation of that utility, which is the water plant for White. Now, if Fort White decides they want to take it back over and then operate it, maintain it, and do the building, at that point,
When we design bulk water, you just, we'll agree on the price for bulk water, exactly.
But as far as the utility in Swann County goes, the interlocal with Fort White to maintain and operate the water plant has nothing to do with that other than the maintenance, the operation and maintenance will be done by that utility, once it's, once it's rolling.
I can certainly call Mr. Brady and have the clarification about what he said in the previous meeting. I think that would, would that to rest, I can certainly give him a call and, and clarify that.
But, what I'm saying, Fort White did not join the utility with you.
Yeah, right, I understand that.
Fort White did not join the utility. So we don't have a utility with Fort White. All we have is an interlocal agreement, maintain, operate, and do the building for your water plant.
So the way I understand the interlocal agreement, if we, if, if, and we're not catching up, but if we cancel the order, maybe that order was built, hooked up and running way before our contract's up with them, that's right?
I hear you. Well, they can continue, we don't have to connect to their water.
The what?
We don't have to connect to their water.
Well, that's a decision of the county.
We got to make that decision, from saying, so, but it's for, what you're saying is that, yeah, it'll, it'll, it won't, if we want to pull out or they pull out, it would only, in a year, it would be a year, right?
Takes a year. So we would continue operation for a year before the interlocal ended. I, I think what you're saying is, is based on, are you thinking about based on the construction timeline?
No, sure.
So you're, so, so I think, yeah, I think what Ms. Kirby's saying is that based on the construction guideline, if we pulled out of the interlocal, by the time that year came up, we would already be connected with, uh, uh, the county. And then, of course, then if we're pulled out, then we would, we wouldn't have to buy a bulk water from the Ever, or whatever, because we would.
Mayor, right. I'd just like to remind the council, they have voted, you got to, just for, the council has voted more than once to hook through this water line from Ellisville. On, on more than one occasion, that council has voted to hook through the water line from Ellisville.
I'm not saying that they haven't.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We, we have it, but that was before all this got started too, right? Am I correct? It's been a lot, there's been a lot of mud and water between the time we voted and the time it's gotten.
I want to remind everyone, they said they're going to give you guys a dump.
Exactly.
Yeah. Go to work, both of you.
That's for, you need to speak, please come to the podium.
I'm just saying, we, we all know from past history that emails don't really mean a whole lot. It's what the board, what the board votes on, or what the council votes on. That's actually what has changed. Mary told me that, I reminded you of that.
Of what now?
Emails don't have, that email that Mr. Kraus doesn't have any liability or, we're saying, what you vote on as a board or council, and what the county commissioners vote on, that's what, that's what has changed.
Obviously, I don't, because we voted to give y'all the three hundred thousand dollars art money, and it's.
I'm just saying.
So obviously, most of those don't matter either, Mr. Ford.
Well, this mayor, funny enough, it's a letter on the letterhead of the board and county commissioners of Columbia. So that don't, yeah, that don't.
Well, I'm just saying, just for clarification, it is, it is an official letter on their letterhead from Mr. Kraus. Like I said, I'll go back and say, I think, you know, after pondering and thinking on what could happen, the only, the only logical explanation I come up with is maybe a lot of commissioners up there didn't know what was going on down in Fort White. They wouldn't, they wouldn't, it was only, you know, if you think about it, it's only Mr. Ford, Mr. Kraus, y'all were at every meeting of ours. Y'all were the ones sitting in here promising the backhoe and the tractor. So maybe, maybe they did, maybe the other commissioners didn't know that. I, I don't know, I, there's got to be an explanation somewhere. And, and I keep trying to find the explanation of why, where did, what got us to where, well, I know the reason, I know the answer to that too, but what happened with it, backhoe and the tractor? That, that's where our relationship with the county commissioners started going sideways. Look, and we'll get to the car, let's go ahead and get to the car. Can we go ahead and just tag that with that, the, the water, the, I mean.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, y'all okay with that? And we'll put it all together, this, this equipment.
With option seven, with number seven.
It's, it's, it's about water, so it's the same thing.
Seven, eight, yeah, seven and eight.
So we'll just table that, we'll table.
Seven and eight. Seven's already been taken.
Yeah, six, seven, and eight. Yeah, six, seven, eight was taken, so let's just table that.
Do you need, do you need a vote for? Sir.
Oh, we want a work shop?
We want the, yeah. But you'd, you'd want to get a, a vote to remove that from.
To table it.
Table it, so you have a vote to remove it, then, so you get a deal.
To remove it?
Well, it just takes, table it.
There's no, there's no time limit on this one. It was just sitting in the yard.
I'll make the motion, we table number eight, seven.
My favorite table number, right, say aye. I'll vote same name.
Do you want to let Mr. Sanders go now, since we're up?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we only got two more.
Take a breather, you're getting a spot topic.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, number.
Okay. You want to go back to?
That's number two, right, let's go back, let's go back to number two.
Okay. Change to the next slide. What? Is what on there? No. I mean, Jen was already got.
Oh, okay, I got it, okay, well, I need, I'll bring something up here, so that's all.
You want to just leave it up to you?
Sure, okay, that'd be great.
We can watch the presentation.
That'd be great, there you go, there's the mouse.
I'll speak short and sweet, mayor.
Yes, sir, please.
Back in August, you asked Andy Eastern and myself a number of things that you would like to have from the town council vote for us. Cement grants, set up a community redevelopment area. So tonight, I wanted to update you all that a grant was submitted for the depot and the caboose. And one of the things that we did, we turned to Jerry, who is a vice president with Infrastructure Consulting Engineers. They're based in Tampa, and they have several offices across the state. As it turns out, the company's known as ICE, and ICE has an employee that lives in Fort White. And it worked out tremendous, oh, wow, when Jerry said, we can ask her to visit the depot and the caboose, and we will give you a master plan, which you all have copies, the town attorney has one as well. A master plan for what you can do with your depot and your caboose. And if we look at your, uh, depot, basically, it's wood rock that we've been looking at. The damage has been done by the weather. And the master plan calls for about ten thousand dollars in architectural building assessment. It calls for about sixty thousand dollars in new construction, a contingency of twenty-five percent for a subtotal under the master plan of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. If we look at the caboose, they budgeted ten thousand dollars for architectural consulting, six thousand dollars for additional consulting, and seventy thousand dollars in actual construction. The depot, as we mentioned before, is very unique, the walls are like cardboard. They're going to have to be reconstructed, and we're going to have to find out how that depot, you know, it was built in nineteen twenty-six.
Caboose.
Caboose, I'm sorry. How the caboose was built in nineteen twenty-six. And so it's not, we're not talking about replacing the wall today. We got to find out how the wall was built, and then replace it that way. And we're talking about a contingency of twenty-five percent for a total of a hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars. In Jerry's plan, and remember, it's a master plan of everything possible that could be done in there for improvements, includes parking and pathways, planning construction, additional interpretive displays, in addition to what's up there right now, historical research, display graphics. in addition to what's up there right now, historical research, display graphics, and construction. We're talking about, if we did it all in one year, $413,000. Now, Mayor, we know that's too much, but at least we have the master plan, and you all have copies of it. So we submitted a grant that we think is more favorable to the town. And get results, the grant is a two-year agreement. The state will livestream in August, Connie will get a link, I will get a link. We can participate and talk to the state. And they will ask us questions, and they'll be, uh, give a take on that. So we're talking about the total grant of $170,000. One of the things we wanted the state to be aware of is, right over here is a traffic count station by the Florida Department of Transportation. It shows 6,500 people come through that area, through the town, every day. Every day. And when I first was aware of the town, and first became acquainted, I, I marveled at the location. It's, it's a jewel, it's a gateway to the community. And so it's a, it's a basis for future improvements. We also brought to the attention, the depot's been the topic in the civic vandalism. And I also got.
One beat.
Oh, I can hear it.
Lord.
I vandalized it till I just saw it, so. But we also had a trespass warning from the Sheriff's Department, there was a family living in the caboose.
Yes, yes, yes.
So the thing with it is, and I've been inside there, it's been vandalized, people have lived in there. So this heightens the application of the state, try and preserve it, try and keep it. Well, you have the support of your state senator and your state representative. And so like I said, well, no, in August. Now, the next thing I wanted to update you with, and you have a report with you tonight, all of you got some reading materials for next month. I did this on purpose, to make you aware. But you have been asked us to set up a community redevelopment area. This is a first draft of a community redevelopment area, the map's in the book. And the base year report that you have for 2024. Basically, the top part of your town is commercial, there's 26 commercial properties. And the autumn half of the map is residential, a lot of it is undeveloped. There's a lot of dirt streets sitting there as well. But what is, what this means is, once you approve, and the first reading tonight of an ordinance establishes you as the CRA. Next month will come back with the ordinance, the setup, the tax increment finance, how that's going to work. And we'll talk about that tonight as well, how this works. There are several CRAs in the state of Florida. And the way it works, if you look at any parcel in the Columbia County area, there is a property card set up. I chose this one because limited access properties is your most valuable commercial property in the city right now. Now, it is currently assessed at $635,115. But it was assessed, or it was assessed at $635,000 in 2022. In the next year, it was assessed at $648,000. So that means in one property, in one year, there was an increase of $13,202. If you had your CRA set up a year ago, under the ordinance and under state statute, you're entitled to have 95% of any increase of any parcel in the town. So this one parcel, it generated $12,504 of the town last year. And it's not a tax proof, so the property owner, those properties are evaluated a year. But what happens is, the base level is set, the county continues to hit the base level. But if there's any increase, and then this is not a guarantee, this is just what has happened the last year, you will receive that. So, and there's a number of streets unpaid at Fort White, that's no surprise to the council. But, in the fiscal year of 2023, those 26 parcels are worth $5.8 million. In fiscal year 2024, they're worth $6.01 million. That's an increase in one year of 26 parcels at $196,849. So the TIF would be $177,655 to the city. And what that means is, you would have this money to work on projects within the city. Next month's ordinance will tell you what programs you can do, street lighting. You have cemeteries to the south, you have some properties in the north, they're in bad shape. You've got some parks that could be worked on. And you can make, uh, like this park over here, that's slowly been shown being rehabilitated. Once the CRA is set up, park owners can come to you as the CRA board and ask for help. And you can offer them low interest loans or whatever. So it gives you a financial tool that you have not had before. And this goes in conjunction with your ad alarm tax that you've been proposing. You'll have that, and you'll have your CRA. And you'll have something for the first time in the town's 100-year-plus history. You'll have something to help improve, get these streets paved.
Right.
Get these sidewalks laid, get some street lighting in there, things that probably were thought impossible in the town's history in the past, but it's very profitable now.
Now, you, you said you had, we'll go back to the, before you get off the base, you got grants offered for the caboose and the depot, right?
Do, do I have?
You got grants out right now?
Yeah, the grant was submitted in early June. And like I said, Connie and I will be participating in the livestream in August. And I, we, we got all our letters of support in it except for the school board, I'm going to meet with them tomorrow, and personally deliver the letter in Lake City, because the more support we have, the better. And Connie showed me some campaign literature from State Representative Raymond. Apparently, the grants we've submitted for these parks and your park over here have been awarded.
Oh, wow.
If that's, if that's true, and if it's been signed by the governor.
You said you seen that?
They sent our package.
So, it, it works, it just takes time, Mayor, it takes a lot of work.
I'm very proud, and I'm telling you that.
I mean, there's no paper, they go through these parcels, I went through 200 of them, one at a time, comparing one year to the next. But once it's set up, communities that I'm familiar with, except for those in Dade City, they've been at this for 30 years. City and our projects helping the towns, and Dade City today, where I'm based, looks just like Mount Door.
And once you outline this, and we approve it, can you always expand it?
Yes.
Down the road?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. In fact, that map behind you, Mayor, it shows the properties where the new wastewater treatment plant will be. That's not in this map, so I'll make sure that's included in the next map. But if you all could take a look at your map, make sure the parcels that you're interested in are in this map. Because once you approve it, and we did the finding and necessity report, we'll send a complete version to the county attorney, the county tax blocker, and the county property president. And they will roll by the properties that have been listed, and they will be subject to this TIF that I described tonight, starting next year. And if I've missed a commercial property, please let me know.
Okay, we'll be voting on that next week.
That's right.
She can study.
You don't try to put the $1 million in on that?
Yeah. We have to, we have to hold it, this is a preliminary.
Yeah, that's not the whole town.
Yeah, usually, the whole town is not included.
Okay.
But sometimes, if, we're not a big enough town, but big towns can have two CRAs going at the same time. But remember, you got to have two CRA boards, and you're making them more complicated. So I, we feel one board, one map, one area makes it a lot easier for a community that's.
That board can do this?
Yeah.
Or is that going to be a separate board?
No, you, you will be the CRA board, you can understand law, you can serve as the CRA board. You will reconvene yourself in a town meeting, and then you will hold CRA business. Then you will reconvene as the town board in the future.
You did a vote tonight on this?
No, this is information.
For the preliminary, okay, got you, got you, all right. About to look at it.
Yeah, when you talk to me in a week, I'm going to bring that out to the board. A $2,000.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it earlier today.
Okay, good deal. Great, you did great.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And thank you for looking forward. That was too bad it wasn't done several years ago.
Yeah, I agree, 100%. We appreciate how you worked, thank you, okay?
And it is a lot of work.
Yes, a lot.
Okay, so then we'll go into number three?
Uh, three, yes.
Okay. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2024-02, and ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, creating a local community redevelopment agency, providing for copulation, providing for conflict, providing for several ability, and providing for effective dating. This, this just creates the Community Redevelopment Agency.
What's it doing again?
It creates the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Okay, got you, okay.
See you tomorrow.
Kind of time, is it 4.30?
Yeah, 4.3. It's labeled up at the top, right here, like this.
Oh, yeah, there it is, got it, got it. Okay. So this is going to declare us as the.
I'll make a motion, uh, pass the first reading of ordinance 2024-02.
He, wait a minute, it's kind of getting more papers up here, don't stop doing all the big meetings. Here's it, I know I did. No, it's right here. All right, so all in favor of. Yep, all, all in favor of ordinance 2024-02, create a local community redevelopment agency, say aye.
Yeah.
I'll vote, say nay. All right, don't get me skipping around.
Now to number nine.
Wait, nine?
Nine.
Oh, lordy.
We've already done all of them.
I thought we had all these. Oh. Yeah, all right. Mr. Landy, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I'm getting that.
Yeah, you're fair to.
Oh. So you should have a, uh, another letter in your packet. Pardon official letter, yeah, the Board of County Commissioners. Um, from Ms. Foreman, county attorney. Then, I'll read the whole letter, it's kind of longer. Uh, but, but the gist of it is that on June 6th, the county commissioners voted unanimously to terminate the interlocal agreement that is concerning the collection of solid waste within the town of Fort White. So they voted to terminate the agreement. Um, and I would consider that this letter is their notice, um, which in the interlocal has a 90-day termination clause. So it means it will continue on for 90 days from June 6, 2024. Then it goes on to say, rather than terminate the agreement 90 days from this date, it's the board's intention, uh, that the agreement terminate on September 30th, 2024. By such time, one of two arrangements must, must be made. Circle that must. For further solid waste collections within the town of Fort White. The town's first option is to agree that the county may include all residential properties in the town of Fort White on the county's solid waste. Effective October 1st, 2023. And that amount is 198.06, it says there's been no study, and no plan to change that. And if they, if, if rather, if we, the town, want to proceed with that option, please notify the county immediately, it's underway. But no later than July 1st, 2024. So that's how, again, under this letter, you would need to make a decision tonight about whether you want option one, which would be for the county to, to take over the solid waste assessment. The second option is for the town to negotiate directly with the solid waste collection provider to meet the town's need, and for the town to pay that provider directly. Again, if this is the town's chosen course of action, the town should move swiftly in order to ensure its chosen provider is ready for operations on October 1st. So, that's the, uh, that's the direction from the Board of County Commissioners related to solid waste within the town of Fort White. And again, under, under this direction, the, uh, the town would, would necessarily need to make a decision tonight.
Now, basically, wouldn't this, wouldn't this pertaining this part of the same meeting that we had with Joel Foreman, Kevin, uh, Kevin Kirby, Dave Kraus, these items came up in that meeting?
They did, yes. I can tell you that, that, I'll tell you, I do not recall all of the specifics of that part of, of the garbage, uh, of solid waste conversation.
Right, right.
But it did, it was all, all the interlocuts.
We owed them money, they owed us money.
Correct.
That's what brought us off to the table.
Correct. We discussed all our interlocuts.
Because we never once have told them that we didn't owe them that money. I think we have the money in the account, we have the check written. And Joel and Kevin, all of them seemed like they understood when we left the meeting, we was like, man, that was great.
Sure.
Wish we'd done this seven months ago.
The, what I do, what I recall about that portion of it was that there is a difference of opinion, um, that it needs to be brought into factual numbers.
Right, right.
Do, do what?
That's exactly right, that's right. So, and we left the meeting with the mindset that they will get their numbers together, we're going to get our numbers together, we're going to make this all happen.
Correct.
Everybody paid, and everybody funded out.
Correct.
That never happened. I never got a phone call.
Well, I would say here, recently, we have gotten, we have provided some numbers to the county.
Right.
Again, Connie, you jumped in if I'm getting any of this wrong, because again, just a lot of this goes back and forth. We provided numbers to the county, and they have now provided some numbers to us. But all this has happened within what?
Last week.
Yeah.
So there's a letter somewhere, I might be in here, that was demanding the payment of the $70,000. Okay, here my question is, where is the money that the town of White saved? Have that been, we haven't talked about that?
Now, again, I, I did not listen to the entire county commission meeting on the YouTube's. Um, but I did listen to part of it. And I believe that that was discussed at the county commission meeting. And I believe that the direction from the county was to, to pay us what they believe that they owed us. Now, I don't, I guess we don't have gotten a check, but, but that was, that was the discussion, that they were going to pay us what they believe that they owed us, and then make a demand on us for what they believe we owed them.
Right.
So, we haven't received a check from the county.
Correct.
Um, and what we have received within the last week or so, maybe a little longer, but it lasted a very short period of time. Um, we have received a, a, an amount that they say that we owe them. And, and one of them, I believe you sent me an email asking about the timeframe of when it was enacted. Because again, this is another interlocal agreement that was done before I came here, uh, so I'm having to go back and recreate some of this. That when, when their local was agreement, or when the interlocal was entered into, rather, the billing would go ahead, so you would bill ahead of the, the court. So rather than billing at the end of the quarter, they would bill at the beginning of the quarter. And so the question is. And so the question is, and, and I don't know the number exactly, there's a difference between, it's like seventy five thousand and eighty seven thousand or something.
Eighty two five.
There you go, I was close. Um, about what, what we could possibly overcome. So there, these discussions that, that are reflective of what we discussed in January, right? Are, are, are not so what happened, they are sure what happened. We're, we're, we're talking about, it's, it's really more of a...
But we're doing it through nasty letters, like you do this, you got to the thirtieth.
Well, we've got a demand, we have a demand from them that said, that it's in a separate letter from this letter.
Right.
That says, we want you to pay us X number of dollars by, what?
June thirty.
June thirty.
I guess what I'm, I'm, I'm questioning, what happened to the glad y'all came to the meeting, we got this worked out, hey, we will make this happen, that equipment is yours, hey, we're gonna, um, we'll, we'll get, we'll be getting back with you.
Yeah.
Well, hell, I, I, those will get back with me in a letter that says that you got to the thirtieth to, to pay. I, so here, I guess my question to you is this, if, if we terminate these checks, what control do we have to get our money?
I've been doing this a long time. I can't imagine that if they have been on the record saying that they owe us X number of dollars.
Were you a hundred percent sure they were on the record saying that?
They, I mean, they discussed it within a meeting, and I believe, I can pull up the letter, we don't have it right here, but they talk about what they're gonna pay us.
I didn't see that.
I can confirm that.
Are there not minutes?
You see when the citizens gonna pay us?
Are there not minutes from all these meetings?
Well, they're, they're on my...
Well, what, what happens in, in all meetings, like even this meeting, number one, it is recorded here, so you can go back and actually watch, you could go on YouTube and watch this meeting, it's free, you just go on YouTube, type in Columbia County Commission, and you could go back and watch the June sixth meeting in its entirety. Um, and, and so you could get sort of, some of the answers that we're talking about, and I don't even talk about them, on the, uh, at the meeting. The minutes are, are more of a, they're, they're a written, um, summary of the meeting. So sometimes the, the things get lost in translation, things get paraphrased, et cetera. So if you really want to know what was said, what was discussed, what was voted on, go back and, and watch, you know, the video.
Excuse me, it's eighty seven five.
I said it, said it.
You did. I got the letter right here.
Do we have a dispute yet, sir? Do we have a, that a mail, I mean, or a dispute saying?
We have, we're, I'm waiting on clarification from Waste Pro themselves, because we have a bill here where we paid, they're saying we owe from October one forward to now.
Okay.
I have a bill here where I paid Waste Pro for the month of October, okay?
I had to go back and pull that up, because I'm like, I thought we already paid in October. So we went back and researched it, so we do have a little discrepancy there right now, we're trying to, we're trying to get to the date.
That's one issue. The second thing I've requested from Waste Pro is to tell us what they have paid the county in franchise fees for the town of Fort White, because that money is due to us, and we're waiting to get that number from Waste Pro, because the county keeps saying they don't know, they're guessing, uh, depends on when Waste Pro pays them, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's part of the equation as well, the franchise fees off of the commercial accounts, okay?
We had, we had, Connor, we had worded out, we're twenty five thousands for the October, October one, that we still are waiting on.
From October one of twenty three, yes.
Yeah, and then we have another one in October twenty four?
Yes.
Another twenty five thousand that we, oh, they didn't, it's not twenty four yet, but we haven't gotten one twenty three yet, so, and then what else was we, the franchise fees?
The franchise fees off of the garbage.
Right, and then there was something else.
The, uh, restocking fee off of the catalogs, which is a couple thousand dollars.
We got most of that back, but there's still something out there.
Yes, yes.
And that's the money we used to pay that well, was the well people?
Brown and...
Rowland, that's right, Rowland.
Correct.
The stuff that we have, did it get some money?
Yes.
It did, okay.
And that's that?
What we talked about in the last session?
The well.
Yeah, that's right.
The one.
It was stuff they never...
It was a, it was a disinfection medium that they were gonna use, that it turned out not to be what they had promised it would do. So, that was, the county purchased it.
We don't know what, we don't know what the franchise fees are, so, I mean, it's, how long has it been since October, remember?
October of twenty three. October first of two thousand twenty three, we still don't know what our franchise fees are gonna be, uh, paid back to us.
And I guess that's why I felt so good about the meeting we had with Joel, because I figured we were pretty close on the numbers, what they owed us, what we owed them. So I figured it's a good watch, let's just get everybody to pay, get everybody to call it up.
Well, we're still at that same point. Now we're starting to receive the letter that, well, if you don't pay them, then what?
Yep, what, what I'm looking at here is an email from Mr. Foreman, uh, dated May thirtieth, and this went to, um, myself, you, part of Kevin Kirby, John Crew, and David Kraus, that discuss, and this is before the June sixth meeting, so in this, uh, May thirtieth email, um, he discusses that, let me get back to it, I do know that email now. He discusses that the county, um, acknowledges that they owe us twenty five thousand dollars under the interlocal agreement, um, and will pay the same. So they acknowledge, and this is, in this email, it's, okay, we, we acknowledge, um, as of July first, um, the county acknowledges, and we're gonna pay it, uh, the twenty five thousand dollars. It's the same email where he initially makes the demand on us to, to pay the eighty seven, whatever. So then at the meeting, they discuss this, this is, this is on May thirtieth. So on the June sixth meeting, they discuss the monies owed back and forth, and there's a discussion that takes place, uh, about the catalogs and the franchise, not the franchise fees, the, the twenty five thousand fee, well, the, the twelve five fees and all that, and, and what came out of that was the county saying, let's pay them what we believe we owed, which is the twenty five thousand plus some other money, okay? And it ends up being a, a, a significant amount more than that, I'm not exactly sure what the total amount is.
Yeah.
But, but there's some, there's some number that they come up with, that they say, okay, we're gonna pay them this, and by our recollection, meaning the county, uh, administrations, I'll forget it, that if, if we pay them X number of dollars, they still owe us Y number of dollars, okay? Take that for it, and say there, that, that, that was a discussion and the direction that was had at the June sixth meeting, and that's where this, this comes. So, I mean, we could, we could meet at the, at the, you know, at the city limits and exchange checks. That's how we're believes, actually.
Yeah, well, here, here, you guys, here's my suggestion, is we got, we got, we got the check, we got the checks. What's the problem?
That, that right there is part of the problem.
Bring some white heart into the city.
Yes.
Hey, um, you have something to say to the board?
I said.
Um, what I would suggest the board do is, we have the checks cut, is, Lindsay, do you mind taking care of that for me?
I have, yes.
Make sure we get, listen, in a private matter, when I have to, when I have my attorney work on stuff, I usually say, here, you, you, you make sure the eyes of God at Jesus crawl.
Sure.
Okay, get, get our money, and y'all stay, if you've got anybody to cover life and whatever.
I can't imagine that if we deliver the checks to them, they would not do the same.
Right.
I, I just don't imagine.
I, I guess what I'm saying, I just don't want to release the money and then not pay us. I mean, you see how long we waited on the question, so that's my biggest fear, so...
I'm gonna give him this one and not the other until we get clarified about October, is that all right?
That's fine, I mean, are y'all okay with that? I mean, before we just hand the checks off, I mean, y'all?
What was that one?
That was seventy five thousand.
Seventy five.
That's where, that's before the other, whatever.
Until we get clarified about the October billing that week.
Yeah, it takes it up to what Amy said. Now, real quick, before we, before we move along, guys, get out of here, um, are y'all okay with, I mean, I don't, it depends on now, if they even want it or not, but giving the resident, I, I don't want to give our commercial over, I mean, I think keep the commercial. I've been in contact with Dana Miller with Waste Pro, and been speaking with her, and, and Frank, and, um, their legal department has gotten the le, they didn't even know this was going on, so nobody from the county has said a word to them, okay? So now they've got the letters, so now their legal department's working on it to see, so what I'm suggesting, bringing the board, is let, let the county, if they want to take the residential, then let them do the billing and everything. Let's keep the commercial, and we'll do our own billing for the commercial, if y'all ain't got a problem with that. And we gotta set up a camp, but we have, we could, we could sit out bid.
We have to see if Waste Pro is gonna be agreeable to that.
Well, but if they're not, we could sit, we could bid it out to other, other contracts. We got the one bid from, uh...
But that was for all of it, not for that.
Right, I got you.
Does that bring income? I mean, are we ahead by doing that?
And residential brings, I mean, no, I mean, it, it, it'll make a lot of money on, I mean, on Waste, I mean, it's not, you know, where the city, that's when they sold the trucks a long time ago, when they, after they don't pay.
Well, you, we'll make money or we'll lose money?
We won't lose money, but we, it's a very, it's a very slim.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll go in the hole a little, because we have attorney's fees we have to pay on the assessments, et cetera.
The residents will save money.
Yeah, the residents, it goes down, it, it, because we, here, whoa, since you brought that up.
No, 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 I'm saying, if we took it back over, we can't get the rate that Columbia County's got.
Yeah, but I don't see them keeping that rate very long, their rate's a bit to go up, and I'm speaking for, I'm just speaking for me, I ain't saying I heard that, so I'm just saying, their rate's better to go up, I mean, so...
But still, we couldn't match Columbia County rates.
Probably not, from the whole, I wouldn't think.
From, from, from the meetings we've had before, because we're so far from the dump. It costs us way more to get it shipped to the dump than Columbia County, but Columbia County's got residents all around the dump.
That's right.
I mean, that's just a call.
Yep, um, so if y'all okay with that, I, I, as long as we keep commercial, I don't, I don't really, yeah, I'm gonna work it out, we gotta figure it out, so if y'all okay with that, I'm fine with it.
I mean, I'm fine with it because of the residents.
Right, but like I said, don't, don't get too happy about that, that deduction that they're gonna get.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, as a whole, we can't get the rate that Columbia County gonna get, even with them going up, because we would, I mean, if them going up, ours would be that much higher, too. One of the mistakes we've had before.
But we tried to reduce it this past...
No, no, here, here's the thing, we can reduce our rate right now, the county told us that they were going up, we couldn't adjust it, you can't just go in the middle of the year and adjust your rate, you have to go into a fixed rate. So when we started to adjust the rate back down to compensate for when we set it up on the taxes, remember the tax deal, when we had to put it on the customer taxes?
Right.
We had to compensate for that difference of what it cost us, that's why the rate went up to the three fifteen, okay? Now we was able to bring it back down the following year, because all that got paid to the attorneys and the fees and all that stuff. So we were gonna, no, no, that's you, anyway, we're gonna bring the rate back down. Well, then David Kraus calls and says the rates of the garbage is going back up, okay? Well, how much? We don't know. That's always the answer we get.
Right.
So I told Connie, well, we can't lower our rates till we figure out what rate it's gonna be, we can't lose money. So, it rocked on there till we couldn't lower our rates no more, and their rate never went up. So we couldn't lower our rates.
No, that, that's not, y'all don't miss him when I'm saying, I'm not saying that or something. I'm saying, if we go into a new contract, if we took it over completely, we couldn't match Columbia County's rates because of the freight.
Yeah, we aren't matching it now.
Yeah, I understand, but we still couldn't.
Fewer of us can...
If they go up, ours is gonna go up. Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with getting them.
I've, I've got two, two things before you guys vote on anything. Number one, this letter that we have says either we take it all over, right? Or does it, does it...
No, it says residential.
It says residential, it does.
I called that when you read it a while ago.
Okay, yeah. Because what, the, the interlocal, so again, this would have to be a, a, an amendment to the interlocal, they're, they're, we should, we should confirm this, because again, the interlocal references residential and commercial. So they're voting, they have voted, they've already voted, to terminate the interlocal, which would terminate residential and commercial. So, what they're proposing here, I suppose, would be a amendment to the interlocal?
A new interlocal.
To just handle the residential?
Okay.
I guess, yeah, I guess.
That's my reason with you, so...
Yeah, it doesn't, let's see, blah, 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 blah.
We said residential, bud.
Yeah, okay, so if it doesn't, it doesn't reference creating a new interlocal, it just says, hey, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're, we canceled the interlocal as a whole, but within the next ninety days, you need to, to decide whether or not you want us to continue doing it, which would necessarily be a new interlocal.
Right.
For, for them to just handle residential. Yeah, okay.
But there again, when we don't, if we decide not to do the order, they're gonna go back and go, hey, we don't wanna do your, we don't wanna do it.
Sure, any of us, yeah, that's, that's potentially, that's, that's true. Anyway, so I'm all, listen, I'm all about letting the county do the residential, y'all are, if y'all are, if you're interested in it. It saves, it saves the citizen's money, and, yes, so, commercial, we'll continue building our commercial accounts.
We don't start building our... Based on bills we do, like, we'll have to put that out.
Yeah, we'll have to do it, but it's them or whoever we decide to go against, so that's fine, yeah, sure. Are y'all okay with that? Have one more?
Oh, yeah.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't want us to, to move past this without getting to it, because again, I'm just responding to the, the, the letter from, the letters from Mr. Foreman, who demands eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars to be received by June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or the county will take action to collect the same. So now, we're not gonna have a meeting between now and in June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. I have a check now for seventy five thousand dollars, um, in hand, that, that I can facilitate getting to Mr. Foreman between now and June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, but that's not eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars. So what I don't want to happen is I don't want to hear my name on the Youtubes next month, being said that, that I or anyone else here on the council dropped the ball about not getting what we owe, if we owe, to the county, and so the council, I believe, needs to give your clerk the authority to, to, to run this down, to see, do we really owe eighty seven thousand five hundred? We may, I don't know, I don't know if she knows, right?
No.
Um, and, and if we owe that, then the authority to go ahead and cut a new check or an additional check, whatever, um, to cover that, and if not, then the council needs to discuss how you wanna handle, you know, if, if, if it's revealed that we don't owe this additional, what's that, I'm, I'm terrible with that, ten thousand?
Twelve five thousand.
Twelve thousand, I think twelve five quarter, whatever it is. Well, that, well, I'm okay, I mean, yeah, I'm okay with that, the, the thing is, is that where, where do we draw the line as a council, though, where we make sure we got our money before we start releasing checks?
I don't disagree with you.
There's gotta be some kind, and I knew you were being funny when you said that a while ago, but it's almost gotten to that point with our relationship with the county, is let's meet at the line, county line, let's exchange checks.
Well, I, I think what needs to happen is, I need, I need to convey to Mr. Foreman that I'm in possession, that I'm in possession of a check for seventy five thousand dollars and may payable to Columbia County or County Commissioner, and that we need to determine the additional twelve five, and at the same time, please confirm that the county is cutting us a check for at least twenty five thousand, if not more, and I don't recall if they owe us more, I believe they discussed owing us more.
They do.
At the meeting, which you can all go back and listen to now.
We need to get, we need to get a copy of exactly what they owe.
I can't, because they don't tell me what the franchise fees are.
Well, we're, we're, we're working with, see, the problem is, we're working with, uh, Waste Pro now.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a third party that, you know, again, to be fair to the county, to be fair to everyone, if that's Waste Pro's issue, then we need to work with it between now and then. So, yes, sir.
I just wanted to confirm that I did talk to Mr. Kraus this afternoon. We did vote at the meeting to pay Fort White while we owed them. We clerked the court vice checks over two weeks, y'all were on the next pay period. Y'all are on the next pay period, we'll see.
But how much, do you know how much it is?
I don't know how much it is. Whatever we approved at the meeting, I didn't ask the amount, but it's the twenty-five thousand plus whatever.
There are some, there's some other numbers.
See, you, see, you can find the number down.
Yeah, they, they discussed it.
So we give them two directions?
So we just need, she, she needed a motion or she needed a direction?
No, I, I think there needs to be a motion because it's gonna involve potential money paid by the council to the county.
So who wants to do the long motion?
Up two twenty-five. Say up two twelve five.
I, I think, I think what we need to get is a motion, um, to give the clerk the authority, and someone could just say that you, they adopt the motion that I'm proposing. Give the clerk the authority to confirm the amount that the town owes the county between now and June thirtieth. And if necessary, to draft and expend the additional funds to make the county whole. While at the same time, making sure that the county remits to the town the money that they have per their June sixth meeting.
I'd like to adopt that right there.
Motion to adopt, okay, you got a second?
All in favor of the motion that was made, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
All right, so motions, the motion's been answered, okay. All right, so what, what now do we discuss about, are we gonna do, let them take care of the residents?
Well, no, you need, you need a vote on that.
We didn't get that part.
You need a vote on that. Cause I stopped you.
Are y'all, are y'all okay with letting the county do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we need a motion to let the county do the, say it specifically, residents only.
I will make a motion that the county takes over the residence only garbage pickup in Port White.
And billing.
And billing.
Good, all in favor of county taking over the billing and pick up the trash in Port White, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right.
All right.
Residential, residential.
Do you need to say that we will initiate and begin with commercial collection?
Well, that, that's what, I'm, I'm waiting on some, some information back now, so I'll bring that back when we get it.
Who, who is gonna notify the county on that though?
Sir?
Who is gonna notify the county on that request for the resident garbage pickup? Y'all listed a letter to the county.
Well, it was in a letter.
Well, the whole thing is correspondence for the county and the town is not very good.
Right.
We don't have, nobody knows what elephants are doing.
Right, well, the, Mr. Murray. I don't know, I don't know. I don't agree with that, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, yeah, well, I go and speak for emails to go back and forth that I'm copied on. Usually emails that I'm, uh, copied on have multiple people on it. So if people aren't reading them or getting them or whatever, I, I don't know. Every email that goes back and forth between me and, me and Joel have four, five, six people copied on it. So I can't imagine why that's it. Now, it may be an issue of, of, of those people not disseminating out to other people within the town or the, or the county or whatever. I don't know. I, I can tell you that in other municipalities, school boards, counties, water management districts and all that I, that I reiterate, usually don't have these group plans. So, so in my opinion, the, the town does more than is normal as far as communicating back and forth. Um, typically, there's not so much involvement of the attorneys carrying this water back and forth between the town and the county or whatever. It's usually done through the town clerk and the county manager, things like that. And, and, and the attorneys get involved as needed. I don't mind, obviously, I've been invited and stay involved in it. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think it's a problem. I, I disagree with Mr. Ford respectfully, um, because I, I, I personally have seen, of course, they're all on the record, so anyone can get a look at them.
Right.
To see a number of people that are copied on emails back.
Right.
Well, wouldn't we be doing the interlocal with them on that?
We would have to. We are gonna have to do some manner of, of revise interlocal because it's not contemplated in our existing.
We would be doing the new interlocal, they take it over.
And I think on that letter. Yeah, I believe. I think on that letter, Mr. Ford, they gave us a deadline to, that we had to have an answer.
They did, they did. I mean, basically.
And all I'm asking is who's gonna give the answer? To our attorney or to our clerk or to our, our county manager that you want to, to do this interlocal? And if you wanna do the interlocal, we'll write the interlocal, send it to you for y'all to approve. I'm just, I'm just wanting somebody to notify that we need to do this interlocal.
I think.
Are you willing to do it? You gonna do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis, I ain't got nothing to do, I don't want to do that.
A lot of them like to write about dumps.
We'll, 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 we'll get a handle on this for it, I don't think. We'll try to get, maybe, maybe when you call, uh, Joel about the money and.
I'll call him on you.
Or email, or email. All right, so where we go now?
Number ten.
Number ten.
Update on franchise fees.
At the last meeting, I gave you the financial that had, uh, written on there that the Duke Energy franchise fees were way under what they were the previous year. And I had been in contact with Duke Energy and was waiting on an explanation. Well, their explanation is is that they, um, converted to a new billing system in November of twenty-one. There's a letter that's at your station from Danny Collins, who is the Director of Government and Community Relations. Their new software had a glitch in it to where it overpaid us sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Therefore, they made a decision within Duke Energy without notifying us that they had overpaid us and just proceeded to withdraw the overage over the next six months out of our franchise fees and never told us and never gave us any indication whatsoever. Um, he apologizes profusely in this letter for them doing that and basically blames it on their, uh, tax department, which is run by Ernst and Young Accounting Firm. As of April two thousand twenty-four, we are now whole in that the sixteen has been paid back. So from here on out, we should be receiving the entirety of the franchise fee and consumer service tax for a monthly basis.
So do we know what that is now?
It varies from.
They're paying us so much?
It varies from month to month, but it averages about four to five thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
But we have been getting.
But we, we're paying back all of the sixteen thousand.
Yes, the sixteen has been paid back, yes.
Good deal.
So that's the explanation for that.
Number eleven, update on funding, press, before the legislative?
Yes, um, as, I don't know if y'all have heard, but Governor DeSantis signed the budget. Um, we had applied for three point three million to, for improvements to the water system. We were approved for one million. So we will be getting a million dollars for the water system. Um, the other thing we were approved for is remember, we did the Firdapp grant applications for D's Park and for Johnny B. Brunt Park to install some playground equipment and both of those were approved. So we, you're, you're angst about applying for all these grants and never getting any money? Well, we're, we're starting.
It worked out for me.
We're starting to get some.
Good, good.
Um, last on the list, I have a request from, straight from the heart, straight from the heart. They are the local, uh, group that does various charity items. One of them being, two times a month, they utilize the Fort White Community Center for a food giveaway. Um, they are asking for a monetary donation.
You got seventy-five grand or something?
Whatever.
Whatever.
We had at one point talked about, well, we'll wait and see what we end up with after the yard sale. And we.
But I mean, here, keep this in mind, but we, we, they utilize the community center for free two times a month. We're okay with that. And I know, um, and, and, well.
We provide trash bags, we pay, you know, and that's, that's a donation.
That's a donation, really, I mean, you're donating.
And it's not just for the food giveaway. We love to use it for, uh, school supply giveaway, uh, coke giveaway in the winter times, et cetera.
Well, the young Marines, they're gonna use it every week, but they don't use it outside, they never go inside. So, I mean, I don't know.
That's equal to four hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Two rentals a month is equal to four hundred dollars a month that we are currently.
They can get, you know, more revenue, which I'm probably, you know, about to, I mean, I don't know, whatever. All right, um, y'all, y'all okay with that? I'd say we give the community center two times a month, so y'all okay with that?
I'm good with that.
You think we should help out? What do you, what do you?
Well, is this for something special or is this just a donation to them?
No, just a donation to them for, for, yeah.
We don't know what.
It's nothing specific. It's just for them to maintain probably, but I hope, no, they get the center and they get supplies. We provide all the trash bags they use and the cleaning supply and they, yeah. We gotta get this other washed out.
Yeah, so I mean, just, let's, let's leave it, I mean, let's, right now, tell her, tell her to check back with us. We'll, we'll try to initiate something else out, I mean, if I gotta do something, I'll say.
Well, we're, I'm already getting questions about when you wanna have a fall yard sale, so.
Don't get me wrong, that's all. Just wait a month to talk about it, all right, so. All right, now, aisle number five is citizen comments, um. But yeah, we're, we're going to citizen comments, I didn't know if you had. I, I can pretty much, Ruben, if you want me to explain to her what kinda what's going on. Cause I, I, I spoke with Mr. Ruben, uh, what's happening, Sunday, anyway. Anyway, under the ordinance that we have right now, um, it's, 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 it's calling for a sewage with, with a grease, um, interceptor or whatever, interceptor.
Yeah.
And, um, they'll supposedly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that mess up. When he's got there now, only provides for two food trucks. They have the, the grease interceptor. And I guess to upgrade the system and everything, it's gonna be about forty-five thousand dollars to do all that. We got sewer coming. What me and Connie talked about today was is, is really, it's hard to give an answer, but turn it over to Lowell and see if Lowell sees any reason, if we couldn't, maybe some options. Maybe, maybe an option out there somewhere that we could, maybe, I, I don't know. I'm gonna seek for some options.
Well, when the sewer comes, there's still gonna have to have grease interceptor.
I understand that, yes, but I'm just saying, but, I mean, I don't think, and I don't think the grease interceptor was the expensive thing, was it? Is that the most expensive thing, the grease interceptor?
We're gonna have to put a grease interceptor, a larger drain field and a larger septic tank.
So all of that combined.
And drain field will be obsolete in eighteen months. The only thing that will stay there would be a grease interceptor. The problem is that the ordinance states that it's required four trucks. That's the verbiage that was used.
If they don't want with two, isn't the other food trucks responsible to dump somewhere?
By state.
By state law, they required to dump somewhere. So they got a record of it?
Well, every food truck is, really, you could be, but we, we did it. And, and here's the thing is that, you know, we, we spent a lot of money on this ordinance and stuff and get, get back up now, like I said, I, I wanted to try to help them out. But keep in mind, whatever we do with them, we're gonna have to do with another. Another one could come in, in the city limits tomorrow and whatever we do, we'll have to do for others too. So we need to make sure that we, that's why I'm saying maybe Lowell can give us some insight on maybe what we can do to help them out to get.
To get to the.
Till the sewer gets here, till the sewer gets here. So I don't know if we'd be cross, I don't know if we'd be bringing.
Well, here's the thing about the sewer, here's the thing about the sewer. It's still in flux about which properties are gonna be, uh, included in phase one. We don't even know that yet.
That's true.
We don't even know that.
That's right.
That's tentative and we've had some discussions about that.
Yeah, we're kinda, yeah, we, we, yeah, so we're gonna.
So we don't even know when, eighteen months, maybe, maybe not.
Didn't y'all just put something in?
What, what did you put in and what was that talking about?
Did I take the? Yeah, come on, come on, all right, yes, please.
All right, so my name is Ruben, I'm the owner of The Collective. Uh, for the past six months, we've been going back and forth because of a new ordinance that the town was planning to pass and enforce on my already existing business. In order for my business to comply with the new ordinance, we will have to spend over forty-five thousand dollars in updates and upgrades that will be obsolete once the sewage system comes. Um, the Department of Health already approved us for a variance to use our existing septic based on the information they received from testing our ground near the drain field. They determined that The Collective could install a nine hundred gallon grease interceptor and allow two of our food trucks to use as a comm series. The upgrade has already been installed for two food trucks. The permits and the variance were all done prior to this new ordinance. According to the new ordinance, The Collective must have a tank large enough for four food trucks. They don't even make a grease interceptor large enough for four food trucks. The Collective would have to spend over forty-five thousand dollars and in less than eighteen months, the system will be obsolete. As a small local business owner, I can do greater things with that money for our community given the opportunity to not spend it on these updates and upgrades that will be obsolete. We have been meeting independently with various members of the town council in the past couple of weeks and we will be providing all of them with a binder full of documents, emails and et cetera. All that have to do with, um, the issues we've been dealing with for the past year and a half. Um, we believe that The Collective should legally be vested prior to this new ordinance. As per section eight point oh two of the town's land development code, we can fill out an application with the clerk and have the council vote on the matter next month. We will seek a vote at next month's meeting from the town council on whether or not to, uh, use this vested interest code as part of our land development code. So basically, um, if you guys go ahead and follow up with that code, it basically says common ball vesting, eight point oh two oh three. A right to develop or to continue the development of property notwithstanding this code may be found to exist whenever the applicant proves by a preponderance of evidence that the owner or developer acting in good faith and reasonable reliance upon some act or omission of the town has made such a substantial change in position or has incurred such extensive obligations and expenses that it would be highly inequitable and unjust to destroy the right to develop or to continue the development of the property. And under this code, it says, applications for vesting determinations shall be filled with the town. The application shall include all pertinent, pertinent evidence and/or shall include a request for a hearing. The town council shall within thirty days schedule a hearing. Uh, so we're hoping to go through this direction. Um, as you know, forty-five thousand dollars is a very high number. Um, and the majority of it would be for the septic tank, that it's, it's gonna be obsolete. So we're hoping to go and figure something out with you guys, um, put it to a vote the next month.
I mean, you spoke about that the other day, sir.
When you said Department of Health, are you referring to Environmental Health Department?
Yes.
That's different.
And Environment, Department, DEP and Department of Health.
It's Environment Health Department.
Yeah, but DEP. They go ahead and go where they permitted us that, um, because as you know, um, the food trucks are preemptive. So the whole commissary status, they usually go to their own commissaries, they get that thing done. The mayor and I discussed possibly for those two other trucks, getting a record. We can go ahead and provide you guys every month a record, they get these commissary letters signed. Um, I think there's a lot more things we can do to work together. Um, so we will be, uh, looking for that.
Well, the, the other day when we, so I also, everybody here could be very clear. The other day when we were talking to, um, you made a comment that this thing kinda blossomed into what you. into what, you didn't know when you started, or as Connie thought of it, one drug. It gotta blossom into this. So that's, listen to me, let me finish real quick. What I'm saying is that you can't just go on a piece of property and blossom stuff out and then expect everybody, the rules, you just follow the rules. I mean, that'd be me starting a manufacturing home business in Cleveland, and I just go, I'm gonna carry one lot, I'm gonna carry one house, and the next thing I know, the city rides by and I got ten houses on my property. I didn't tell them to, I told them more. And I understand what you're saying, it blossomed, and we're here to, I wanna help. So I came down to your property the other day. Well, in our defense, according to the previous ordinance, food trucks, there was no mention or maximum, there was no mention of just one food truck. It was a food truck ordinance that regulated food trucks, it is not a food truck park. You're under a totally different observation, and we've never dealt with that before, so when we started dealing with food trucks, we dealt with food truck ordinances that was just one truck on a piece of rent property. You came in and bought the property and developed this whole new thing that we were not aware of, and started with one food truck. And then you said, as you said the other day, it blossomed into where it's at now, but you can't, you still can't, you still have to turn stuff into the city and have approval, you can't just, so that's where we're at now, so we're here. So as far as invested, I mean, we never gave, the city never gave you approval to be invested. But I'm still not saying that we're not willing to work with you, but as I told you the other day, I thought that, I mean, you had this conversation about the codes and all that, you, anyway, I just, I'm just...
It seems like the codes have evolved while they've evolved. So it's kind of a give and take of both of them.
But you had to, because we've never been approached for it since...
I'm not saying it didn't have to, I'm just saying, you know, when I was analyzing them for trying to follow the rules and trying to grow, trying to provide for the community...
And I'm all about it, but here's what you gotta keep in mind, whatever we do for them, we gotta do for the next guy that comes in over the...
Well, and remember...
So that's, one regulates the other, so that's where I'm at, is...
And remember, we had the option of shutting them down until all of this got resolved, and we, you know, trying to work and try to be amenable and trying to promote business in a forward way, we agreed to let them stay open while we evolved into this process. We tabled everything until we could get the ordinance in place.
And I don't know this, I'm just asking questions, because I'm here, like, and I can't even think of the thing, someone's gonna say snow cone trailer. The dog one, what's the dog one?
Boondogs.
Boondog. Does that fall under the same guidelines as grease popping everywhere or not?
I mean, they don't have any grease.
Well, I'm just saying.
They have to go to the commissary to empty out their gray water, or their black water.
But that boondog does not need the grease receptor thing.
Well, everybody needs, every food truck is licensed, and they need to go to their commissary to empty out their water, whether every day, every other day, they have to go.
But that has nothing to do...
Unless I provide a service truck, and they can use mine, but I only, for my septic, my grease interceptor is only large enough for two.
And this is just observation, it's my observation that those two trucks don't move, the white and the blue.
Correct.
And that's who's utilizing, where the crazy wings and the other one move and take care of their own garbage.
Well, the white one needs as well, because now that we have this grease interceptor, they will...
That's why I ride the snow cone, is that a fifth truck?
That's a fourth.
That's a fourth.
Is that boondogs?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the blue one licensed?
Yes, that's my truck.
I know, but you've got your DBPR license?
We're having one Wednesday.
Oh, it's, you don't have it yet.
No, we haven't been opened.
So it's not licensed yet?
It is licensed, it's just not operating.
It's a provisional one?
No, it's licensed. When Sean was working there, that license belongs to me.
No, that's not what DBPR told us, they said...
That's fine, I'm not gonna argue that.
Because I went online and looked, and they don't have you...
I'll show it to you right now.
I'm not trying to argue.
Listen, four whites need food, four whites need somewhere for people to go eat. Right now, they're providing a service that four whites don't have.
Right.
But a couple places.
Right.
None of that.
Right.
None of that, I mean, fast food down here, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the other food trucks aren't open enough, like, down here in town. We need to try to work something out.
Get with Lowell and just ask him, is there a way to get around this? Because I guess my biggest thing in for the council is don't wanna open it up where anybody can roll up in here and just do a food truck and, not a food truck, but a food truck park, and the next thing you know, four whites overrun with food truck parks.
Well, by the time another one comes along, all of our learning, y'all, as well as the council...
But understand, whatever we approve for them, we'll have to follow suit. That's where this is getting, that's why we're trying to do it the right way the first time, because whatever we give them...
The next group won't have all these...
No, right, right, we have to put it out here and say, here's what we need, so, right, right, that's kinda how it...
I think it's been learning from both sides.
It has, it has.
Kind of what Ruben already explained, we would be grandfathered in. This ordinance only came into place after The Collective, so you're asking your lawyers to go back and look over your hand and look at the original statements.
And it could be, it could be a possibility, I mean, it could be a possibility.
That's their position.
Right.
Isn't their grandfather.
Right.
That doesn't mean it's active.
Right.
That's their position. And they're more than, and they're more than entitled to bring that before the council and say, hey, we believe that we are vested as, Mr. Ruben, you're an official, Mr. Ruben earlier, hey, here's our, here's our evidence and why we believe we're vested, present that evidence, the council agrees, okay, you're vested. Now, what is, the safe part of that would be, okay, well, if you're vested, you still have to comply with state laws and...
Right, right, right.
But I don't necessarily agree that it's a foregone conclusion that they are vested.
Right, right.
It is their position that they are vested.
Right.
I believe that there's another side, there's always, the other side of the argument, which is the argument that you said before, which is they came in as one thing and it has turned into something else. Again, not anything to talk about today, because not here on, not here on repetition for a vesting hearing. We could have that. I believe it said, you said something about having it at the next meeting, and I also believe you read from the LDRs that it'll be thirty days. We do need to make sure that time constraints are followed, because both sides need a fair opportunity to prepare for any potential period that they wanna bring. So if it's thirty days, then we should already have this, because thirty days would be thirty days from now.
Right.
So we need to, we need to get that, again, much like tobacco and the dump truck, I would love to put The Collective issue to bed, and so let's, before we do it, that's fine, if y'all wanna bring that, just bring it. In the meantime, talk to Mr. Garrett, Lowell Garrett, if you get the audience, if you know that, and also, I'll talk to the council, because you're my partner.
Right, right.
Not talking to the crowd, not talking to the crowd of rootness, you're my partner.
Right, right.
Mr. Garrett is our planning and zoning guy, he knows, this is, this is his area. He does have, as you know, a problem with being meetings and meetings. So you don't see him here very much. He's the guy who, Ms. Connie will need to take this information to him, who will need to review their vesting petition if they file one, and also talk about potential things that can be done to make it, all those things, and he will be the most appropriate person to be the main character in that.
So we can have that, we think we have some information by the next meeting, so we can handle this.
Well, we have the issue of the special use permit.
Yeah, there's several things, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's several things that we have to get through.
Well, this is the major thing, though.
To put the, to put the issue of The Collective, you know, to rest, first of all, they are making, at least today, this position that they're not subject to the ordinance, so we need to decide whether or not that's true. If they're not, then they're not, and then we figure out, okay, what's that one, if they are subject to the ordinance, then okay, they are, and we go toward that.
One more step down the road.
One more step, two more?
Yes, sir.
Two steps forward, one step back. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have, see if I saw this. Alright.
Is that it, Mr. Garrett?
Keep the food coming.
Aisle number six, adjournment motion.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.